Fantastic. So, calling to order, the Diamond Lake Schools District 76 Board of Education meeting. Roll call, please.
Armenta Hale.
Here.
Hauptman.
Here.
Candela.
Here.
Juan, here. Lozada.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please do me a favor and unmute and join in with me. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items this evening. Do we have any public comments? And just a reminder, if you have a comment, please just type that in the chat box and we will read it into the meeting. Okay, I see one from Dr. Barong. And I'm going to read that. This is Christine Barong, President of the Diamond Lake Teachers Association and eighth grade social studies teacher. We appreciate that the board has worked with us on the issues surrounding blended learning. We are aware that there are a few teachers whose ADA accommodation requests are still being negotiated. We urge the board to do right by these teachers who through no fault of their own have a medical condition that puts them at a higher risk of severe disease from COVID-19 according to the CDC guidelines. Some of them have dedicated their entire careers of over 30 years to this district. We look forward to continuing this conversation in the upcoming days and weeks. Um, we have another comment. This is Joanne Vannard. I'm a member of the Diamond Lake Teachers Association. I'm wondering why teachers with an ADA form submitted are not having the option to work virtually from home, at least until we are fully vaccinated, especially since we have students who have chosen DLA. I have an ADA form submitted. I was given two options on Thursday afternoon. I was told I needed to come to work in the building or take an unpaid leave of absence. I was given four days, one business day to give my decision. After considerable research and emails on my part to TRS and to the administration, I still do not have all information needed to make an informed decision. Are there plans to open up and broaden the accommodations for teachers with ADA forms on file? Here's another one. My name is Barbara Buck. I'm a second grade teacher and member of the District 76 Teachers Association. I have multiple significant mental conditions which put me at extreme risk should I contact COVID-19. I've requested an ADA medical accommodation to continue teaching remotely from home as it would be unsafe and irresponsible for me to do so otherwise. I look forward to continuing to meet with district administrators so that an agreement may be put into place that meets all of my needs. My name is Polly Cluvers. I'm a member of the Union for D76. Explain how the district can hire people to handle babysitting but cannot supply LA for teachers who need to teach remotely.
And just for the board's benefit or even for our public, LA would refer to learning associates.
Thank you. This is Perry Brown. I am a member of the Diamond Lake Teachers Association. I was asked to get an ADA filled out by my doctor. Her recommendation is for me to continue to teach remotely as I am now. When I met with the administration, I was given two choices to come back in person or to take unpaid leave. How can you ask me to go against my doctor's recommendation? Okay, do we have any additional public comments this evening on the agenda? Okay, I see a comment saying yes, if you have a comment, please feel free to type that in the chat box and we will read that into the meeting. Thank you. Okay, will the associates be given the same care and consideration regarding the ADA requests that teachers will be given? Polly Cluvers, Member of District 76 Teachers Association. If we want to continue curriculum rigor, how can we suggest teachers take a leave? What does that accomplish? And then there's a question asking if there's a link to tonight's agenda that can be provided. And that should be on the district website. Mr. Hanson, is there a way for you just to add that to the chat box so that someone could click on that?
Yeah, I'll get it and put it on.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments? Okay, I don't see any further public comments. So we are going to close comments and move on to presentations. Mr. Hanson, were you able to provide that link?
Yeah, I'm going to type it actually into the as an answer.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so now we will move on to presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. When you're available, would you mind projecting and presenting tonight's presentation, please? All right, thank you. Tonight's presentation is available in English as well as in Spanish. So I will, myself, Mr. Rogers, and each of the principals have a portion of the presentation as they go over the specific district operations, safety and health concerns, as well as the school schedules. And Ms. Carrera is going to be translating each of the slides for us. So everyone's patience is appreciated. So as we mentioned in December, as well as the return in January in my back to school letters last week to both community as well as to staff, we are providing an update for the roadmap for return to school for the second semester tonight. Ms. Carrera, do you want to translate that for me? So as always, that we have kept these at the forefront of our decision making. Our priorities since March have been safety, health and welfare of our students as well as our staff. That's priority number one. Our second priority is to continue to provide rigorous and relevant teaching and learning experiences for all of our students. And I think you all saw that when we transitioned and strengthened our distance learning academy from spring to fall, being able to listen and respond to some of the questions and the concerns that came not only from our community members, from our staff, and changed and raised that rigor for our students and their standards for teaching and learning. Priority three, continue to provide social emotional learning supports, connection and resources for all of our students. And then priority four, which we have done, I believe throughout this process, is continue to communicate clearly with relevant information in a timely manner. So prior to January, at our last board meeting on December 15th, basically the state local guidance were that the executive order that the governor had issued, we were in tier three mitigation of the phase four of the Restore Illinois Plan. And so what we had shared out to our community as well as to the board was that we were going to remain in a distance learning platform with students and staff until the executive order was lifted. But since then, in early January, the Lake County Health Department modified its guidance based on the Centers for Disease Control Recommendation. And they went through instead of a positive incident rate, more of a risk mitigation method model. And looking at the data that we'll show you at the next slide is that schools, if we follow all the risk mitigation procedures and factors, which we do, and we've also gone above and beyond the five that have been mentioned from CDC, that schools have a relatively low transmission base, based on doing things consistently and continuously in regards to safety and mitigation strategies. So I'm going to turn the next part of the presentation over to Mr. Rogers, who has been overseeing all of our safety operation and mitigation factors since the beginning and has been working also with local agencies as well as our maintenance department and making sure these strategies are in place.
Thank you. Yeah, just want to go over a slide. The CDC and IDPH put together key indicators and thresholds to reduce the provide the lowest risk of transmission in the schools. That's something the district has proactively been seeking out. You know, alternate mitigation strategies on top of the main five that the CDC put together. The district is going to be practicing consistent mask wearing. All staff and students will be required to wear masks at all times in collaboration with social distancing to all extents possible. That is entering the building, moving around their day, lunchrooms, and then in their classroom itself. Practicing safe and effective hand hygiene, so that is providing hand sanitizer, restroom breaks where students can wash their hands throughout the day. Our robust cleaning and disinfectant protocols that we have in place. We've been working with our janitorial supply companies, our cleaning and custodial company Citywide, providing a robust disinfection program. We've procured new chemicals that are proven on the N list to kill and combat COVID-19 virus. And you know, had a lot of different methods of distributing that chemical from electrostatic sprayer to contact sprays to disinfecting wipes that are going to be available to all staff and students. And we were going to be working closely collaboratively with the Lake County Department of Public Health on contact tracing. And we have established protocols, assigned seating, whether it be on the bus or in the classroom to help, you know, best mitigate those risks of transmission in our buildings. On top of those five key areas that the CDC recommends, the district's also implemented a couple other areas that I'll touch base on in one of the following slides that we present, our health and safety plan. But we're providing high quality ventilation. We've hired nearly doubled our clean staff that's going to be available. There'll be daily certification and temperature checks for each student before they ride the bus and before they enter the building. We've established small cohorts or pods of students. So that's students that are going to be in small classroom sizes or they're going to be migrating classrooms in a safe and responsible way. And then just some small things from a maiden standpoint, we shut off the bubbler units at each of our drinking fountains and we're only allowing bottle fill stations. So that's a contact list delivery method of getting water for all students. And then we've implemented a lot of food service changes in collaboration with our partner Quest. And that is prepackaged meals. So they're still going to be fresh and hot delivered to our students, but it's going to be same delivery method where our lunch staff is going to be serving the students and all prepackaged, you know, silverware, condiments, things like that. So it's just going to reduce the risk of touching another individual's food. So I'll go over that in a little more detail in the following slides when I go over the safety and health and safety plan. So the next slide is in Spanish. Okay, so I was mentioning the health and safety plan. I wanted to take just a little bit of time to review it. It's a document that we put together and we hope answers all the public and staff questions about what our clean sanitation protocols might be. I am just going to put the link in the Q and A section, just in case anybody needs access to that. But the link's available in our agenda as well. So the I'm not sure if we're able to click on that. Otherwise, I'll just go over that in some detail.
Do you want me to open up the link?
If you don't mind, I think that would be beneficial. You know, we don't have to go through it in its entirety, maybe just the table of contents there. But I'll go through each of those different areas and just describe a little, you know, briefly what each of those areas mean and will contend. So as the CDC and IDPH has put out, there's the lowest risk of transmission in schools. One of two ways, fewer than five new cases per 100,000 people or implementing at least five of mitigation strategies. And so the CDC and IDPH link there with all their information is attached as well. But you know, keep in mind, the district is going above and beyond those five measures. And I think some of the most robust items that the district is implementing is high quality ventilation, hiring additional cleaning staff, and you know, you know, producing more robust disinfection products and you know, methods like shutting off the drinking fountains or contactless food service delivery method, things like that. So going to the health and screening section, all students that are going to be riding the bus are required to complete a daily screener each day. So there's going to be new bus passes that students are going to have. They'll have those key questions on there from a health screener standpoint. So does a student have over 104 degree fever? Do they exhibit any of the symptoms related to COVID-19? Or have they come in contact with anybody who's been had a positive COVID-19 test in the last 14 days? So if a student is exhibiting any of those symptoms, the ID card will be indicated they're required to stay home and contact the school office. If they aren't exhibiting any of those symptoms, they can present the pass to the bus driver and allowed to board the bus. And then once they get to the school, each student will be taking a temperature screening at one of our front vestibule areas. And there's at least two entrances for each school. In some cases, we have three depending on the building that allow the students to spread out, remain socially distant, get their temperature checked and still enter the building in a responsible way. So on top of our health screener, we're going to be encouraging frequent hand washing. There'll be breaks made up in student schedules. We're encouraging hand washing for at least 20 seconds. Outside of that, we are going to be producing hand sanitizer in every single classroom and hallways and common areas. So students will have it available throughout the building when they have lunchroom in each of their classroom spaces. And teachers are going to have it in all their high touch point areas. So that may be teachers lounges, the copy room, front office, you know, areas like that. And then universal mask wearing is going to be one of the most important mitigation strategies. Every staff member and student is going to be provided a washable face mask. There, we have multiple face masks in reserves and a bunch of different types of varieties. So if a student or staff member comes without a mask that day, they'll be provided one before they're able to enter the building. Students and staff are allowed to bring their own face mask as long as it meets CDC and IDPH recommendations. And you know, like I said, we'll be able, there's a mask policy that's linked in the agenda or the our safety plan here that'll describe, you know, there'll be some disciplinary actions should a student or staff member not bring a mask and there'll be an escalating, you know, including school suspensions. It'll be mixed in there. So the board approved that policy a couple months ago as well. For physical distancing, there's signage posted all throughout the building that reminds everyone to wear a mask and be maintain social distance. And that's going to be reinforced in areas like the lunchroom. There'll be different signage on the floor as far as where students and staff can stand. And there'll be plexiglass dividers mixed in throughout all these areas. In the area that the district has made its most capital investment in over the last few years has been high quality ventilation. The district had a lot of antiquated equipment over the last few years. Over many years, the last few years, the district has really made a substantial push to get the newest and most robust equipment in our building. So areas that have had the air handling unit or ductwork replaced since 2019 has been the Diamond, or sorry, the West Oak Middle School front office, the Innovation Center, all the classrooms, the band and chorus wing, the library and Innovation Center, the gymnasium, the locker room have all had their HVC systems renovated. And that includes brand new ductwork and the testing and balancing that went with that to make sure we were adhering to the the strictest manufacturer's recommendations. On top of those different areas, we're going to be using our life safety funds this year to renovate all the univents at Diamond Lake. So there's been the boiler replacement that's taken place at Diamond Lake last year. There's been some different air handling units that have been replaced, but all classroom univents are going to be replaced this summer. That'll just better help the district control the heating and cooling environment. Is the biggest, the biggest mitigation that the, our air handling units have is our building automation system. So we've set that up and updated our controls and capabilities to, you know, better automate our facilities. So that means bringing continuous outside air. It's a cycle of just refreshing our air inside of our buildings to, you know, flush out any stagnant air that may be there. And also combating it with our boilers to make sure we have, you know, efficient heating, especially during these cold months. So it's obviously easier to do that once we are in spring, coming back from summer, where we're just able to flush out with air throughout the day. So it is really a balancing act that our maintenance team is, you know, is instrumental on, you know, implementing these policies and procedures. On top of that, we've procured different HEPA filtration machines. These are just portable units that are going to be for front office, nurse's office, any of these areas that are, you know, I'll refer to as more of our containment areas. If a student exhibits any symptoms of COVID-19, they would go there until their parents are able to pick them up. They'll have 60 minutes, you know, for parent guarding to pick up that student. But in the end, we have separate air handling units for those areas. So there, it's not going to be mixed in with any of the other classrooms or or areas that may be in the vicinity. So it's really, it's a benefit the way we have our structure set up and all the PP equipment that we've provided. You know, coupled with our, those five mitigation strategies that we've outlined earlier, that is the, you know, the best course of decreasing the possibility of transmission in our building. I've touched a little bit on our cleaning and disinfectant protocols. That link that's attached will take us to, take you to the district Google Doc page that will show the product they call the the SDF sheets, the safety data sheets for all the products they're going to be using in the building and the N list. That's what the EPA referred to as products that are proven to kill and combat the COVID-19 virus. So all of the products that we've sourced is on the N list. And it's a bunch of different delivery methods. So from a nightly electrostatic spraying of all classrooms and common spaces that provides a blanket disinfection for all those areas, coupled with the increased staffing that we've had, that'll have a contact spray that has a 30 second kill time for the virus. So our staff is well trained and they're well supplied with, with the best, I think, resources that is available to us. We've partnered with a lot of other local districts to see what they're implementing. And, you know, we've had the best of both worlds from what Stevenson is providing for contact disinfectant for all classrooms. So any students in the middle school that are moving areas, they have a disinfectant wipe that they'll take before they go in the classroom. You know, to what, what the best that our janitorial supply company is recommending. So we've been able to source this quickly, effectively, and, you know, able to put it out there for every teacher to have access to for their individual classrooms. I touched base on contact tracing. It's assigned seating, whether it's on the bus or the classroom to help us know where every student is at any given point in the day. So if a student does exhibit symptoms, we can trace where they were at during the day, what classrooms they went to and who they were around. So we'll be partnering with our principals and the Lake County Department of Public Health to report any outbreaks that may take place or any students that, you know, exhibit symptoms. And that coupled with the next section, the protocols for students that are sick during the day. Like I said, we're using areas that have dedicated HVC units on them to isolate those students. That way the area can be contained, can be cleaned, and we can move on, you know, with our, you know, with our rest of our educational day there. So I touched base on at least a little bit of everything with the, the health and safety plan. And I encourage everyone to take a look at it. It's our effort to be as transparent and as open as we can. I know we've produced some videos about what it's like for a student to enter the school building, what a staff member's day might look like. So, you know, we're here to answer any questions and have done so with, you know, the different teachers representation at each building. So I went over a lot of stuff, but in the end, the biggest thing is we are following the CDC. We're following the IDPH, the Lake County Department of Public Health. And we've been up to date on any single new method of mitigating risk and transmission that has been available to us and all the resources at our disposal. So, sorry, I'll move on to the next section. I know we're going to talk about some of the school structure.
Yeah, I can go over.
Translate all that, Daisy. Everything I just said spewed out there.
No, it's fine. I was, I was taking notes. We don't have to actually flip. I mean, we tend to just like, maybe just briefly go through it. So, el plan de seguridad que acaba de hablar el señor Rogers tenemos disponible. Tenemos el plan de seguridad completa. Lo puede encontrar en nuestro sitio web. Y esto aquí está listando los diferentes temas en que damos más información detallada. Eric, can you just click on the Spanish one, please? Y de nuevo, esto lo puede encontrar en nuestro sitio web. Y es el plan de seguridad y salud que fue actualizado el 11 de enero. Y aquí puede encontrar los temas que acaba de hablar el señor Rogers. De nuevo, nada más para hablar brevemente sobre esto, director de salud y síntomas. You can scroll down a little bit. I'm on number one. De nuevo, lo que acaba de hablar es que vamos a estas son uno de los síntomas que estamos pidiendo si alguno de los estudiantes o personal tiene unos de esos síntomas de por favor. Estas son uno de los síntomas, um, que estamos pidiendo si alguno de los estudiantes o, o personal tiene unos de esos síntomas de por favor. Um, de quedarse en casa. Um. Y de nuevo, pueden leer todo esto detallado en nuestro sitio web. Um, para la segunda deslavada de manos frecuentemente. Si eso es lo que recomendamos, más en nuestras escuelas para nuestros estudiantes también. Este vamos a tener dis- uh, alcohol disipante en, en todas nuestras escuelas para la, los estudiantes y el personal. También re- uh, vamos a seguir el uso de la, uh, de la máscara en cada de nuestras escuelas. Eric, you could scroll down to number four. Um, seguiremos el distanciamiento social. Vamos a tener letreros en cada de las escuelas. Um, donde los estudiantes también van a poder ver dónde se pueden pa- parar para seguir el distanciamiento social físico. También hablamos sobre la ventilación de alta calidad en cada nuestras escuelas. Um. Este nuestro sistema de ventilación aquí puede leer, ha recibido acti- actualizaciones de, um, de equipos y también. Um, hemos tenido cambios de la programación y esto lo puede ver en los salones de clase, en la, el área de. En innovación y en el gimnast- en los gimnasios. Um, seguiremos la limpieza y desinfección. Um, como, como dije, vamos a tener, um. Testes disponibles para el personal y los estudiantes. También el alcohol disipante. Um, para, para seguir, um, la seguridad y salud de todos. Um, número siete, rastreo de contactos. Um. El distrito ha contratado personal de limpieza adicional. De nuevo, quien es su única responsabilidad es brindar el apoyo. Um, para seguir la alta calidad de limpieza. Um, y luego número ocho, que es el protocolo para los estudiantes enfermos durante el día escolar. Um, si algún estudiante se siente, se siente enfermo, presenta fiebre, uno de los síntomas. Este serán escoltados, uh, aislados, um. Además de los otros estudiantes, en una habitación supervisada del edificio. Um, y de nuevo, si un estudiante es envie- enviado a casa con síntomas de COVID. Su hermano también será enviado a casa. Um, pero de nuevo, vamos a seguir las recomendaciones de. La, la mesa directiva del estado de Illinois, el departamento de salud pública de Illinois, el centro de control y prevención de enfermedades. Y el departamento de salud del condado de Lake. Um, y vamos a hablar, um, as- siguiente mente más de esto.
Do you need me to go to the next slide?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you.
All right, so based on all the um, information, based on the new recommendations that the Lake County Department of Public Health and the Northern Illinois. Um, association, as well as um, just the safety and mitigation strategies that. Both Mr. Rogers and Ms. Carrera have gone over, we um. Would like to present the board with two learning options for um, the remainder of second semester. Um, begin in-person learning, and what that would mean would be um, return for students and staff physically into the school buildings and into the classroom. Um, follow the typical school day schedule. Instructional delivery would be live instruction simultaneous and in alignment with remote learning. Um, of, of course, we would maintain the mitigation strategies that we discussed and all the health and safety guidelines um, from our state and local organizations. Um, for the families who have chosen to continue with remote learning, which is our Distance Learning Academy, the DLA. They would continue with um, the learning as it currently is, which is receive full-time distance learning through their assigned school. Follow the typical school day schedule. Um, not physically attend school, but will participate in school-based learning virtually from home as they have been since March. Um, and then instructional delivery could take place um, live, virtual instruction simultaneous and alignment with the in-person learning. Um, again, it's going to be based on, you know, how many students and staff come back um, from, I should say, students. Come back as to what kind of program we're going to design. Um, with in-person, whether that's, you know, an everyday, or if that's going to be some type of a hybrid model with an alternate schedule. And then, you know, I do have a little asterisk there that um, all the instruction, regardless if it's in-person or remote. Will be um, from a classroom teacher, but it may or may not be the current placement that you have right now. So depending on if. Um, your teacher on specific accommodations that we um, are going to be putting in place, or we have to. Alternate someone's role, you may or may not have, students may or may not have the same classroom teacher, but we're going to try to minimize that as much as possible.
Por ahorita tenemos las dos opciones de aprendizaje. Um, y de nuevo, eso va a ser basado en cuántos estudiantes y personal van a, uh. Este van a regresar a, al escola para el aprendizaje en persona. So tenemos la primera, comenzar el aprendizaje en persona, que es regresar físicamente a los edificios. O clases de las escuelas, seguir, si, um, siguiendo el horario escolar típico. La instrucción sería dada, instrucción en vivo, simultánea, o, um, alineada con el aprendizaje a remoto. Um, mientras mantenemos las estrategias de mitigación, las directrices de salud y seguridad. Um, la segunda opción es continuar con el aprendizaje a remoto, que los estudiantes reciben el aprendizaje a distancia de tiempo completo. A través de su escuela asignada. Um, seguir el horario escolar típico, no, no asistir físicamente a la escuela. Um. Pero participar en aprendizaje basado en la escuela virtualmente desde su hogar. Um, y de nuevo, la instrucción será en vivo, virtual, sim- o simultánea, um, alineada con el aprendizaje en persona. Um. Este y luego abajo tenemos a participar en la instrucción de un maestro. Pueden o no pueden tener. Um, la ubicación actual, pero esto es dependiendo, um, del personal, um, si ellos tienen algún, alguna. Este. Conición médica o no, si pueden regresar en persona.
So how we're going to um, base our decision on what that learning model is going to look like for in-person learning is going to be based on data. So um, as all of you know, we sent out a declaration of intent. Um. About ten days ago, the due date was yesterday, um, January eighteenth. And so today, in the next few days, um, our school staff are going to continue to reach out to families who have not responded. Um, then from there, we can determine the number of students who um, will be returning to in-person learning. And then determine the students who are going to remain in remote learning or our distance learning academy. And just looking at the way that we have currently structured our classroom with furniture and appropriate social distancing and all the mitigation strategies that Mr. Rogers and Ms. Carrera referred to. Um, we can confidently say that, you know, if fifty percent or lower of our students um, come back. We will probably be able to accommodate a full day or a full week's schedule, because that would be um. Anywhere from, you know, ten to twelve students per classroom, um, up to fourteen. If we have numbers that are fifty percent or higher, um, of students that want to come back. Then we will be looking at designing a hybrid model with alternate days and times. And we don't know what that looks like yet, whether that's going to be, you know, an AP schedule. Whether that would be half days or what kind of that schedule that looks like. But again, like I said, we're going to wait until all the data comes back from our families. Um, and also how we can staff it. We're still working with um, current staff right now on specific accommodation and personal needs. So whatever um, we decide and whatever we communicate, communicate out, as I've stated in previous letters, that we want to um, maintain this platform. Through March nineteenth, which is uh, the last day before spring break. And then prior to spring break, we will send out another survey um, to families that um, continue to stay in remote to see if they want to change their placement. And consider doing um, in-person learning for the remainder of the school year when they return back. From spring break. And again, by that point, you know, the vaccination will be a little bit more available for our um, for our educators. As well as data will be updated and guidelines might be, um, and restrictions may be lifted. So right now, our current data of the surveys that we have back, our declaration of intent, we have ninety percent of them that have been returned by our families. Um, right now, we're at pretty evenly split fifty, um, fifty fifty. Some grade levels are a little bit higher than fifty fifty. So again, we'll have to work through and see what those specific school schedules as well as. I mean, I should say, school um, organizations, the classroom, what that furniture would look like if we did go a little bit higher. And we have um, ninety-five percent of our staff returning um, to come back to in-person learning on February first.
Okay, y de nuevo, estas decisiones son basadas en los datos. Um, mandamos la comunicación pa- para de, um, declaración de, de intención de volver a la escuela o no. Um, esto se venció ayer el dieciocho de enero. Um, y las secretarias de cada edificio han tratado de comunicar con las familias hoy, si no han respondido. Um, esto va a determinar el n- el número de los estudiantes de aprendizaje en persona. Determinará también el número de los estudiantes de aprendizaje a remoto. Um, si tenemos cincuenta por ciento o menos de los estudiantes, podemos acomodar el horario de, del día de semana completa. Si es cincuenta por ciento o más, uh, vamos a diseñar un modelo híbrido con días o horarios alternativos. Uh, la, la plataforma de aprendizaje actual seguirá hasta el diecinueve de marzo, dependiendo de los datos. Uh, esto es, uh, durante las vacaciones de primavera. Y antes de las vacaciones de primavera, también vamos a dar la encuesta a los padres para determinar el cambio de ubicación para el resto de año. Uh, for, por ahorita, los datos actuales es que el noventa por ciento de la, del, uh. De las en- encuestas fueron devueltas. Estamos de cincuenta, de cincuenta por ciento, uh, de algunos grados más altos. Por ahorita, el noventa y cinco por ciento de nuestro personal va a regresar en persona.
So a remainder, um, I should say, of our timeline for, um, and plans for second semester are as follows. So we, you know, have the declaration of intent that went out on the eleventh. It was due yesterday. We're going to be doing some follow-up. Um, calls. Um, for the rest of the week to make sure that we reach a hundred percent of our families or as close to as possible. Um, last Thursday, we shared out a staff letter, um, asking staff if they have specific childcare needs. Um, and or accommodations that they may need. Um, so we have been meeting with staff and putting out a survey. Um, as far as childcare needs, and we're going to try and see if we're able to staff that again. Like I said, it's going to be based on which. Uh, learning associates um, do come back and where they're most needed, but it's our goal to try to provide, if we can. Uh, childcare accommodations for our staff. Uh, we continue to work with staff, excuse me, who have put in either for health or medical. Um, related issues, accommodations, and we're working with them on an individual and um, independent level. Just to maintain all confidentiality and personal information. And uh, once we. Get all the information back, because we haven't received that yet from all of our staff, we'll be meeting with them again and then. Um, putting with them in writing as far as what the plans are going to be. Um, we sent out a parent letter um, on the fifteenth, kind of explaining and walking through the same timelines and information about returning to in-person learning. Um, tonight, we're going to be asking you to take action as the Board of Education on what we're presenting to you on the second semester teaching and learning plans after. Um, our presentation and hopefully after all of your questions um, have been addressed. Um, principals are working with families in, uh, who participated in the facilitated distance learning. We're hoping to bring them back um, next Monday on January twenty, uh, January twenty-fifth. And then on February first, staff required to resume onsite work. Get them used to getting their classrooms back um, in order, used to the new safety protocols and processes as they enter the building. And just feel comfortable being back into the building and being around others. And as I shared in the previous slide, we have uh, ninety-five percent of our staff who is returning, and that includes both certified as well as non-certified staff. Um, and then on February third, our principals will, will be working um, with their teams on putting together kind of a district. Uh, question and answer um, session, similar to what, you know, the coffee with the principals and the principal chats that they do on a monthly basis. Uh, but we'll uh, focus specifically on returning to school. And then also do a video of what a typical school day will look like for a student, how they get off the bus or how they get dropped off when they come in. How do they check into the office, you know, walking into the hallways, putting their things in their. Classroom or lockers, how those lockers will be spaced apart. What a classroom looks like, how far apart will they be from their classmates, where will the teacher be, how will he or she be presenting instruction? You know, the lunchroom, recess, mass breaks, washing breaks, all that will be uh, gone over and kind of the. School day presentations on February third, as well as an opportunity um, for parents to ask any questions that they have. Um. Uh, of the principals in, um, on February third, and we'll make that presentation available both in English as well as in Spanish. And then our goal right now, but it's, it's flexible, um, students on February eighth, which would be a week after the following Monday from February first, when staff come back. Students whose families choose to return to in-person learning, um, will be coming back into the building. Um, and concurrently, remote learning will just continue to take place. And again, this subject is, or this data is subject to change. Based on um, parent survey data, if we have to alter some of our plans or create some different schedules. And then also staff plans, if we have to make some different accommodations for staff. Um, or give staff different placements. We want to make sure that we have enough time to talk to people, to communicate out, to make sure that there's a, a strong plan. That we can implement with fidelity, um, not the date that's important. It's more of the continuity and the strength of the program. So. Um, sometime after February eighth is our goal to get our students back in person.
Okay, los planes para el segundo semestre, estas son unas fechas importantes, um, para que sepan, um. Las, uh, lo que hemos hecho y lo que vamos a plan, uh, estamos planeando en el futuro. Um, de, del once de enero hasta el dieciocho. De nuevo, mandamos la declaración de intención, um, a, a nuestras familias. El trece de enero, um, mandamos una carta para el personal. Esta es una encuesta y necesidades de cuidado infantil, infantil del personal. Um, y, um, la administración del distrito seguirá trabajando con el personal, las maestras y los maestros individualmente. Uh, este, van a tener sus reuniones personales dependiendo en sus situaciones. Uh, el quince de enero, mandamos la carta para, o comunicación para los padres. Hoy estamos a pidiendo, vamos a, este, presentar a la, a nuestra junta educativa que tomen acción sobre los planes de enseñanza y aprendizaje. El segundo semestre, que es la presentación que está viendo ahorita. Uh, esperamos que el veinticinco de enero, um, sir, uh, vamos a seguir con la academia de aprendizaje a distancia facilitada. El primero de febrero, se requiere que el personal resume en, en, uh, el trabajo en los edificios. Um, el tres de febrero, uh, estamos, este, vamos a querer. A tener las presentaciones de preguntas y respuestas del dis- del distrito, donde van, van a tener los padres y el personal. La oportunidad de preguntarle a los directores, um, diferentes preguntas. Um, y vamos a hacer también un video de, del día escolar para que puedan ver ustedes cómo los niños van, van a entrar a las escuelas. Uh, cómo van a, dónde van a poner, um, sus cosas, uh, si es va a ser, este, en los salones de clase. Uh, las comidas cómo van a ser hechas para ellos, el uso de baño, lavada de, de manos. Cosas así. Um, y luego, uh, por ahorita, para el ocho de febrero, los estudi- los estudiantes que eligen a regresar el aprendizaje. A persona, o apra- uh, este, o aprendizaje remoto simultáneo. Uh, esta fecha es sujeta a cambios basado en los datos de la encu- de las encuestas que, que fue, uh, terminada ayer. Um, y los planes del personal.
So as I said earlier, um, with in-person learning and remote learning, we are going to continue with a typical school day with the schedules that we have. Um, have been, had in place since, you know, the fall. Um, what that's going to look like as far as, you know, like I said, a hybrid schedule, or if it's going to be a full week. Schedule is going to be based on how many students, um, actually come back. So I'm going to um, turn this part of the presentation over to each of the principals. Who are going to walk through um, each of their schedules of what the day is going to look like, whether students are in remote. Or in-person learning. So I'm going to um, hand it over. We'll start with Diamond Lake School and Dr. Fredericks.
Ahorita, oh, sorry. Vamos a ver, este, los, uh, esos son los horarios del día escolar, pero de nuevo, esto es dependiendo de la encuesta, de cuántos estudiantes. Estudiantes eligen regresar a persona o no. Um, y por ahorita, cada director de, de su escuela va a hablar. Sobre los horarios programados para su escuela.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, right now, uh, we are presenting a, basically a, just a, a general version. Of what our, our schedule and our day will look like at Diamond Lake School. Um, when we began, um, distance learning, when we returned to school in August. We primarily focused academics in the morning, and then we had, um, more of an asynchronous. Um, afternoon, which allowed our families to get very used to getting online. It kept our kids online and our teachers able to work with the students. And now it is time to stretch our academics throughout the day. So what we will be doing is having our in-person learning as well as our district. Distance learning academy schedules reflect one another, but we're going to take what we're doing now and bring it. Um, further along till the end of the day. So we'll begin the day, um, if the students are in-person learning. We'll be beginning with, um, entry, taking our time to get in. It's going to take a little bit of time to get everybody settled. Um, use the restroom, restroom, do hand sanitizing, have breakfast. Um, and while. And while we're doing that, we think we're going to be having our specials teachers touching base with our students who are in distance learning academy, but we're still working on the details of that. Then from eight, 8:10 or so to 10:30 core academic instruction, very similar to what we are doing now. For the most part, our teacher, our students will be in small groups. And they will be either working with a teacher when it is distance learning or they will be working with a teacher in person. We are expecting to have two lunch periods, recess and lunch. Our students will be going hopefully outside to recess. And then coming in and as Mr. Rogers shared, the students will have prepared lunches that are individualized for them, so we will not be having buffet. Students will be separated in the lunchroom. I do anticipate with the number of students coming back, some of our students will be in the lunchroom and some of our students will have tables set up in the small gym to accommodate the number of students as well as to keep everybody separated. From 11:30 to 12:30 and 11:30 or 12:30, I should say, excuse me, and then until through the afternoon, students in person will be experiencing specials in person. Students with distance learning will most likely have asynchronous specials for the most part. And then in the afternoon, we will have our social emotional learning time and some additional small group instruction. And then our distance learning students will be doing the same things. Just as I said, those specials might be more asynchronous. And then from 2 o'clock to 2:25, the in-person learning students will be cleaning up, hand sanitizing. We will have a systematic dismissal so that we have everybody controlled and able to stay distance as the kids get onto the bus or move to the front of the building to be dismissed. And our distance learning students will again continue small group instruction or they will be working independently. But they will still be connecting with some, some special teachers. Our pre-K and EC program will have our AM group will start at the 7:40 AM and go to their traditional dismissal time of 10:10 AM and we will have in-person at that time. And then our, our pre-K and EC students in the afternoon will be any virtual students who are still in our program.
Okay, ahorita pueden ver los horarios este para la escuela de Diamond Lake. Lo que la directora Fredericks habló es que antes teníamos académicamente más de los contenidos a la mañana, por ahorita puede ver el horario de 7:40 hasta las 8:10. Es la entrada, tiempo de baño, disinfección de manos y el desayuno. DLA que es el aprendizaje de distancia. Van a conectarse virtualmente con los maestros de clases, de las clases especiales. Para los dos de 8:10 hasta las 10:30 es la instrucción académica básica. 10:30 a 11:30 para los dos es recreo al almuerzo. Y de nuevo para de 11:30 a 12:30 recreo y almuerzo de nuevo. Para el aprendizaje en persona de 11:30 a 12:30 perdón, de 11:30 o 12:30 todavía no están seguros, hasta las 2:00 de la tarde son las clases especiales. Aprendizaje socioemocional, instrucción en grupos pequeños. Y de nuevo, DLA es el aprendizaje a distancia. Las clases especiales asincrónicas, aprendizajes socioemocionales, instrucción en grupos pequeños. Y de 2:25 aprendizaje en persona es de limpieza, tiempo de limpieza, tiempo del baño para lavarse las manos y despedidas sistemática. Aprendizaje de a distancia durante ese tiempo sería instrucción de grupos pequeños, trabajo independientemente y conectándose virtualmente con las maestras de especial, de sus clases especiales. Para pre-K y educación temprana, temprana grupos en personas empezarían a las 7:40 de la mañana hasta las 10:00 de la mañana. Y en la tarde serían los grupos virtuales y la sesión de grupos sería programada.
I do want to also mention that as I receive questions from parents, I have a frequently asked questions section in the Friday update, so please keep referring to that and I will add questions or answers to questions as I get more questions from families.
También la directora Fredericks en su actualización que manda semanalmente con los padres tiene una sección donde ponen las preguntas más frecuentes de parte de los padres, ahí es donde da sus respuestas. So si tiene alguna pregunta o en qué inquietud siempre se puede comunicar con ella y ahí y ella le puede responder y ahí puede encontrar las respuestas de parte de ella también.
And I think Mr. Preble is probably ready to share some information about West Oak Intermediate School.
Thank you, Dr. Fredericks. I wanted to start out before going into the schedule, just saying, you know, why we did the schedule that we changed it the way we did at the intermediate school and basically just like Dr. Fredericks alluded to at Diamond Lake, it allows us to provide consistent academic instruction throughout the entire day. Right now, or actually the schedule that ended on Friday was core subjects in the morning, specials in the afternoon. And then my next point, we'll go into that. The schedule, this new schedule is able to be followed whether or not students are in person or not. And that means whether we have some in the building and some remote, we're all in the building or we're all remote. If, you know, something reverses later on and we have to go back home. This schedule allows us to function regardless of where the students are learning from. That's not possible to do in person with the schedule that we had been running since the beginning of the school year. So as we flip to the next slide and I go through the schedule, so I have all three grade levels up here. It's important to know that every single day has the same structure for each of the grade levels. So everybody's going to start with morning meeting and homeroom. From 8 to 9 o'clock and that's where we're going to do all of our social emotional learning. We'll also be having breakfast at that time. And the 8 to 9 o'clock will allow us to absorb students into the building that may or may not be getting to school on time for whatever reason, but we want to make sure we get them in, get them into the homeroom and get all our kiddos set up for the day. In third grade, I'll start with that schedule. At 9 o'clock, they'll go into their literacy and their flex block and I'll explain what the flex is in just a second. That's from 9 to 11, from 11 to 11:45 is lunch and recess. After lunch and recess from 11:45 to 1:30 is math and flex time. At 1:30 to 2:30 every day will be their specials time and they'll do a wrap-up session at 2:30 to dismissal time, that'll be time for, and everybody has it at the end of the day. That'll be time to get organized, get cleaned up and get ready for an orderly dismissal. Whether you're taking the bus, getting picked up or you are walking home. That flex time before I go into the fourth and fifth grade schedule is academic flex time. And basically it's designed to either extend a math lesson or a literacy lesson, bring in science or social studies. The reason why it's there is because I have to have some identified times for math and literacy so that our interventionists and advanced programming can be scheduled around certain times where we know exactly what core subjects the students are going to be in at that time. So the flex time is just an extension of those periods. It's not, it's not any type of downtime or anything like that, but it's just time that can be utilized by the teacher to expand on any of the activities and lessons that they're doing. Going in the fourth grade again, they are also in homeroom and morning meeting from 8 to 9. Their specials block each day will be from 9 to 10 o'clock. Math flex will be from 10 to 11:45 and they will go to lunch and recess at 11:45 until 12:30. After that, they have their literacy and flex block and their wrap-up as well. In fifth grade, we have our morning meeting until 9 o'clock and then they will start with math at 9 o'clock until 10. And then 11 o'clock will start the choir, band and literacy block. So students that are in choir and band will be attending choir or band from 11 to 11:30. Now, we will be hosting band three days a week on Monday, Wednesday and Friday, inquire two days a week on Tuesday and Thursday. Again, that's from 11 to 11:30. Students that are not in choir or band will be in the literacy block in their, in their classrooms. The literacy block extends to 12:30 when they'll go to lunch until 1:15. They come back and they have academic flex time, so I don't have a math or a literacy block right then and there in the afternoon. But they will be working on math, literacy, science and social studies opportunities. And then they'll have the wrap-up. It should be noted that any type of mask break, washroom usage and all, that's all going to be incorporated into the day. It's just not hard scheduled into the master schedule at this time. We're going to see what it looks like when we have all our students back in the building and what makes the most sense. And that is the intermediate schedule, Mr. Cunningham. Or sorry, Mrs. Carrera.
Sorry, okay, thank you. Okay, pero ahorita vamos a hablar sobre la escuela intermedia de parte del director Preble. Aquí puedes ver grado tercer, cuarto y quinto. Lo que acaba de hablar él es de 8 a 9 de la mañana, los estudiantes van a estar en su salón principal donde van a tener su reunión de la mañana. El propósito de esto es para que los niños se puedan acomodar, pueden llegar y de nuevo acomodarse cuando lleguen en la mañana. Para el grado tres de 9 a 11 van a tener el tiempo de lectura o flex. Que flex puede ver debajo de la pantalla. Está diseñado para incorporar los contenidos de ciencias, estudios sociales o extender las lecciones de matemáticas y lectura, esto es lo que significa. De 11 a 11:45 será el almuerzo y recreo. De 11:45 a una y media es matemáticas o sus clases de flex. De una y media, dos y media son sus clases especiales y de dos y media a tres van a terminar para su día. Para el grado cuarto, de 8 a 9, de nuevo su salón principal, reuniones a la mañana. De 9 a 10 sus clases especiales, de 10 a 11:45 matemáticas o sus clases de flex. Almuerzo, recreo de 11:45 hasta las 12:30 para el grado cuatro. De 12:30 hasta las 2:30 es tiempo de lectura o flex. También de dos y media a tres van a terminar. Para el grado quinto igual en la mañana y también de 9 a 10 matemáticas. De 11 a 12:30 van a tener las clases de coro, banda o lectura. Para banda eso va a ser los lunes, miércoles y viernes para clases de coro, son martes y jueves. Si los estudiantes no están en coro o banda van a tener sus clases de lectura durante ese tiempo en su salón. De 12:30 a 1:15 es el almuerzo, recreo, 1:15 a 12:30 sus clases de flex. Y de nuevo 12:30 a las 3 van a terminar y ahora vamos a hablar sobre la escuela secundaria de West Oak con el director Cunningham.
I just want to interrupt real quick, Daisy, excuse me. On the fifth grade schedule, I did leave the block that deleted, but the fifth grade specials will be from 10 to 11 each day. I apologize for missing that.
Okay, perdón, para el grado quinto, lo que no está parte de este horario programado es de 10 a 10 to 11:15?
10 to 11.
De 10 a 11 es las clases especiales, perdón, y eso no está programado aquí ahorita, pero lo vamos a actualizar. Thank you.
All right, so I'm talking about the middle school, the good news is that our schedule has remained unchanged. So the best schedule for the second half of the year is what students have been experiencing. The change would be obviously that students are coming in person and so I'll focus on just a couple of the major pieces. The best thing to probably check, if you have not already, is the presentation that we sent to families this last week, both on the parent bulletin and on the At a Glance website that gives the details of our different, our different plan both for in-person and remote. Ms. Squared, you want to translate that real quick and I'll keep going?
Yeah, thank you so much. De parte del director Cunningham acaba de hablar que los horarios de la escuela no son cambiados. So eso es una cosa buena de parte de la escuela secundaria. La única cosa que va a cambiar es que los estudiantes van a estar en persona y por ahorita vamos a hablar sobre los horarios.
Thank you. So our students that will be coming in the building will switch classes and they will go to all of their classes each day. This is because of a few different reasons. One, we have 24 different class offerings at every grade level. That is a lot of different classes to offer that students would need access to. And so every student has a very unique schedule. The, another reason is we have run our FDLA program and we understand that our students do need to be able to move, that sitting for seven and a half hours during the day is very difficult for endurance for our students. And we want to make sure our students are able to stay engaged and have access to their teachers that they are in class with during, throughout the day.
Thank you. Lo que acaba de hablar el director Cunningham es que los estudiantes tienen sus varias clases que van a cambiar durante el día. Y entendemos que los estudiantes necesitan que moverse para, para seguirse participados en sus salones y es importante para que participen con sus maestras. So los estudiantes con todas sus clases van a ir a cada de sus clases para seguirlos moviéndose durante el día escolar.
Students would clean the, would clean their surfaces each day before they sit down for the class because they'll be rotating in and out of classrooms. They will also be using the cafeteria for lunch and we will have lockers that will be spaced out throughout the building because we will have less students in the building and will be able to stagger some of our access to passing periods so that students minimize being in the hallway at the same time as well as we would reserve bathroom and water use, using the water bottle filling stations for during class time as opposed to passing period.
Los estudiantes van a tener, van a tener la cafetería abierta para el almuerzo, van a tener sus armarios, pero van a estar distanciados. Los horarios para, van a estar, van a ser diferente para cada estudiante para evitar que todos estén juntos en un espacio. Y las, los lugares de agua van a estar abiertos solamente durante las clases para que los estudiantes no vayan a usar las estaciones de agua durante cuando se estén moviendo en los pasillos.
Thank you. We would have PE offered, those students will not change. We know that's a big thing in middle school, but that's not something that will be happening during remote learning. And our band and choir will look a little bit different. A part of how they will look depends on the numbers. And those surveys just closed and we're contacting families to see exactly what we're able to offer in terms of programming. But I did give a little bit of a preview to families that we will do our best and band and choir both to address the ability to be able to practice your instrument, which your voice is an instrument, so your voice as well. And to do so safely, so we're looking very closely at the health guidelines because they have been updated in the last couple of weeks. But we've prepared our students to be open to the possibility that not every day they would be interacting with their instrument. That they're just to make sure that we have the safe amount of spacing for every student.
Sabemos que es importante tener la educación física, pero desafortunadamente esto no va a estar pasando ahorita. Y luego de parte de banda y coro, esto va a ser dependiente, esas clases van a llevar a cabo, pero es dependiendo de cuántas cuántos estudiantes eligen de venir en persona. Y también basado de las recomendaciones vamos a ver cómo se mirará, cómo se mirarán esas clases. Porque tienen instrumentos, pero queremos que todos tengan el espacio de usarlos seguramente. Pero de nuevo, esto lo estamos planeando para ver cómo, cómo se va a ver o si se llevará a cabo.
That's it for the middle school.
Y eso es todo para la escuela secundaria.
So for our return to second semester in-person learning plan, we have also recommended a revised calendar for the remainder of the school year. And again, this is based on some feedback that we've gotten from staff to have some additional time as far as the changes to plan and to collaborate and to work together in teams. So as you know, that today was remote learning planning day, students were not in attendance and that was something you know, that we had presented to you earlier. We would like to, or we'd like to propose to change February 1st, March 1st, April 5th and May 3rd. Currently, they are all late start days, we'd like to change them to early release days. Following the same plan that we have, they would still be considered full instructional days. Students would come to school in the morning and then staff would have that time in the afternoon for professional development, training, meetings and planning. February 12th, March 18th, April 19th and May 28th, we would like to modify to early release days. Sorry, modify early release days to half-day teacher institutes. So um, we have those right now, um, built into our calendar that we're adding. Um, so this would not require us to modify our calendar at all for the end of the year. They're be included as full instructional days um for the morning. Um, March eighteenth, um, right now we would, um, it's currently March eleventh for parent teacher conferences. We'd like to push that back one week um and do it for March eighteenth. And then March nineteenth, we'd like to propose as a full teacher institute day. Um, right now it's on the calendar for March twelfth. And the reason being pushing it back a week is um, this will help us plan for um another survey that we'd like to send out. Uh, mid-March to our families who are still remote to see if for the remainder of the school year. Um, April and May, if they would like to return to in-person learning and that'll give us time to um evaluate. Um, how things are going and give teachers um the additional week, collect the data and to to do some planning. And if we have to change plans, we can. Again, if we're in a hybrid model and we're only going to school part days, then um if data changes, if more students come back. If you know the restrictions are lifted, we may be able to go a full hundred percent full um in-person learning for April and May. And then again, keeping the last day of student attendance as it is right now on June fourth.
Um, esos son algunos cambios, um, del calendario actual que tenemos. Um, para hoy teníamos el día de planificación de aprendizaje remoto, los estudiantes no asistieron. Um, actualmente tenemos días de inicio tarde, estamos pidiendo que eso se cambie para días de salir temprano, que serían para el día febrero. Primero de marzo, cinco de abril y el tres de mayo. Um, para el doce de febrero, dieciocho de marzo, diecinueve de abril y veintiocho de de mayo. Um, estamos pidiendo que se cambien a de días de salida temprana a medio día, días instituto de maestros. Para el dieciocho de marzo, es, ese es el día de conferencias de padres y maestros. Por la tarde, eso es un cambio de, en el calendario que teníamos del once de marzo. Um, y luego cambio del doce de marzo, um, sería, estamos pidiendo para el diecinueve de marzo, día instituto de los maestros. Um, y de nuevo, las encuestas de padres van a salir en marzo antes de las vacaciones de primavera. Um, y vamos a ver si las cosas cambian para los meses de abril y mayo. Pero siguiendo que el, el cuatro de junio sería el último día de asistencia de estudiantes.
So our next steps is, as I mentioned earlier, we'd like the board um to take action tonight on the plan that um we've presented. And then in the upcoming weeks, um, what we'll do based on that, once we collect all the the family survey data is um. Update and revise our roadmap for return to school specifically. They are teaching a learning plan and what that's going to look like for in-person as well as for remote. Um, communicate to families um who are in the facilitated distance learning academy. Um, that plans will start again on January twenty fifth, which is um next Monday. And then it is our goal, once we collect all the data and review all the staffing plan and which students are coming back. Um, again, looking at our placement, our safety plans, working with principals, they're working with their building leadership teams. Um, communicate out to um all families by February first, what in-person learning will look like, whether that will be a full week, full days. Um, or some type of a hybrid model. Then again, determine staff placements. Again, we're still working with staff um who have put in for accommodations, um, working with them on an individual level to maintain confidentiality. Um, and then we will follow up with them as far as can those accommodations be um granted? And if so, how and what that's going to look like for them? And then also determine if we have staff available for childcare based on the learning associates that will be returning. Um, and what we mean for childcare is our staff who may need childcare, um, because their students, um, or their own children, um, aren't back in-person learning yet. Um, Mr. Rogers will continue to work with the bus company as far as creating transportation route, which students who um returned in-person learning. Um, what does that look like? How many routes are we going to need? You know, making sure that they're um equally spaced out, um socially distance appropriate, um seating on the bus. Um, also, um, Lake County is in the process right now of that, uh, providing vaccinations for all Lake County educators. Um, our goal, the goal that, uh, the most recent information that I got is that we're in group one B. And that they will be starting the schedule for group one B, um, the first week of March. Sorry, excuse me, uh, the first week of February. And then there is a twenty-one day um period where you have to wait from the first dose to the second dose. And so we're hoping by early to mid-March that all staff who choose to be vaccinated will be able to have access to that vaccine and have it um be scheduled. And then we will continue to provide um professional development, planning time and collaboration meeting for our staff for this ever-changing situation. And be able to accommodate um the different two, two different types of learning and teaching platforms that we have. Continue our meal distribution um for pickup for those families that don't choose in-person learning. Will be able to still provide those um twice a week. And that's um seven, providing those pickups for twice a week, uh, but again, the meals are for seven days. Um, also, just as our teachers and Mr. Hanson have done, um, provide student and family training, resources, supplies and support for pickup for those families. As uh choose to remain remote. And then ongoing, um, the excellent services that uh Ms. Carr is providing as community liaison, not only within our community, but also. Within our schools, working with teachers um for kids who need that extra support as well as any family resources.
Para los próximos, los pasos, este, para hoy estamos presentando, um, la acción para la junta educativa. Um, por ahorita tenemos actualizada y revisada, hemos revisado la hoja de ruta regreso escolar que hemos presentado con ustedes. Um, siguiendo comunicar, um, con las familias para el veinticinco de enero, que sería para el lunes, vamos a comunicar con ellos. Um, si, cuando siga la academia de aprendizaje facilitada. Um, dependiendo de nuevo de la encuesta, todas las familias serán comunicadas, um, para el primero de febrero. Si será la semana completa que los estudiantes regresarán o será hibrido. Um, y vamos a determinar la ubicación del personal, si hay acomodaciones y cuidado de niños para los hijos de de los, las maestras y los maestros. Um, y el señor Rogers seguirá trabajando con la compañía de transportación para crear las rutas de transporte para nuestros estudiantes seguramente. Um, y luego, vacunas, los educadores del condado de Lake tienen la oportunidad, um, de agarrar las vacunas para COVID. Um, este, por ahorita estamos en el grupo uno B que, um, podemos, estamos viendo que las vacunas para, para los educadores sería para los primeros de febrero. Um, y luego vamos a seguir, seguir proporcionando el desarrollo profesional. Um, para las maestras y los maestros, reuniones para tiempo de colaboración de planificación, la distribución de comidas, que es dos, dos días de la semana, pero. Um, distribuye comida para los siete días de la semana. Um, entrenamiento de estudiantes y familias, recursos útiles y apoyo para ustedes. Um, y nuestras maestras y maestros y vamos a seguir con los servicios de apoyo del enlace comunitario, siguiendo otra, um, de parte de, del departamento mío. Um, además con la comunidad, también siguiendo trabajando con las maestras y los maestros. Si hay apoyo que nuestras familias necesitan en sus hogares durante este tiempo.
So we're asking the board tonight, um, based on the information that we've uh shared with you. Um, and the updated guidance and the current health, safety and mitigation protocols that are in place in all district seventy-six schools. Um, Board of Education to please approve the teaching and learning plans as presented and the changes in the current twenty twenty-one school year calendar.
Y la recomendación para acción para la, la junta educativa basada en la guía actualizada y los protocolos actuales de salud, seguridad y mitigación implementados. En todas las escuelas de distritos setenta y seis, le pedimos a la junta que apruebe los planes de enseñanza y aprendizaje tal como fueron presentados y cambios en el calendario actual del año escolar veinte veintiuno.
So this is an opportunity if, um, you know, any of our board members have any questions or comments um that they have prior to taking action on this plan that we can. Um, help to address or clarify. And I had mentioned this uh at an earlier meeting today, but just, you know, we are in line, not only do we continue to stay in contact with. Um, and updated with local and state um guidelines and agencies as far as. What are their recommendations and any type of new um updates that we have to put in place for safety or health or well-being? Um, we, uh, myself, Mr. Rogers, uh, Dr. Jiraka, as well as the principals, keep in touch with all of our Lake County or many of our Lake County colleagues. Myself, um, we meet twice a week um with all superintendents and we are in line with, you know. Following as far as a timeline for returning to school. So we have about forty-one out of the forty-nine um school districts in Lake County that will be returning in the next two to three weeks. With some type of in-person um learning in their districts.
Can you hear me? I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Lozada.
Okay, sure. So the first one's for you. Um, once we receive the surveys and the parents have made a decision. And that's around, uh, by, by February eighth, that way we can uh enable this program. Um, parents will not be allowed to submit a change of mind for, for lack of a better term. Uh, it's, it's a done deal until the end of, until March, uh, March nineteenth, right? There's no other way that parents can change their minds. Is that correct?
If they're in in-person learning, they can always switch to remote. But we won't let anyone come in from remote, we won't let them switch to in-person learning.
Okay, all right. Um, next couple of questions are for uh Mr. Rogers. Um, on slide four, you talked about the high-quality ventilation system. I think I mentioned this to you earlier or to Dr. Lewis, but um, is there, um, is, is there a process or a way that you can? Given the, the new environment, the new uh system they put in place to easily determine whether it's functioning at a high level, at a medium level or a lower level? Maybe anything like a green, yellow, red um display that will tell you that the system is working efficiently or as expected?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. Um, so we've, I, I kind of mentioned when we conducted uh our capital improvement project two years ago. Over half of our HVAC system was replaced from scratch and those were twenty-five-plus-year-old systems. So when all those are put in, part of the process is uh is robust testing and balancing that's done. So if you're putting these equipment in, you're making sure they're running at manufacturer specifications. Otherwise, the machines aren't certified as, as being installed properly. So um, that's the, the benefit of working with a construction partner like Pepper. That uh nothing is signed off for, you know, unless it is meeting all the manufacturer's recommendations. So we, we know that the, the majority of our system is, is working properly based on the fact that it is brand new. Now, the other pieces of equipment that we've worked, uh, that we've refurbished over the years and we've put a lot of time into. We're very, very lucky that we have two dedicated and certified HVAC technicians on our maintenance team. We've never had that, um, at least since I've been aware of, of our maintenance team in the district. So our building automation system measures, you know, the cubic feet per minute throughout the ductwork. Uh, we have many, many different temp, uh, control points that are measured, um, you know, via our building automation system. So they're constantly monitoring it to maintain, you know, appropriate levels of airflow through the vents. And, you know, anything from the percentage, the dampers are open to let an outdoor, outside ambient air, things like that is monitored on a, on a, you know, near. Minute-by-minute basis, when we have alerts in place, uh, if anything is out of balance. So we, you know, we haven't had additional, uh, you know, certification done since we put in the new units themselves. But the fact is we have a, you know, you know, quarter million dollar building automation system that monitors the system on a minute-by-minute basis. You can log in at any time to see exactly how the machine is functioning, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we're very confident in the, the ability of our equipment right now.
Sure, and that's even more important in the containment area, of course, so.
Yes.
Uh, um, next question to you, um. Um, you, in your documentation, you listed protocol for, for six students, sick students, and that's very good. Um, where, where does it say what is, what the district will require for that student to return? For example, is a student required to, um, you know, get a COVID test? May it also include a vaccine in the near future if available? What, what's a guideline for that student to be able to return?
Yeah, and that is a great point. That, that's one of the benefits and the uh. I guess the problems that we've had a bunch of different documents that we've created throughout the years. This is what we consider a, you know, a comprehensive uh plan of health and safety. But we do have some other plans we've put together, such as our, you know, our facilitated distance learning uh document. So, yeah, I think that is a good suggestion that maybe I tie both of those together. But that document itself talks about exactly what a, when a student can return. So a student needs to remain symptom-free, I'm just gonna bring it up real quick. Yeah, it's our D seventy-six roadmap to return plan that we, we released in the middle of the year. But uh, for a student to return, they need to, you know, be symptom-free for fourteen days. Uh, or they could produce a negative COVID test to return. Because some of the COVID-related symptoms could be allergies or things like that. So a student really has three methods of returning. Wait the fourteen days, produce a doctor's note saying, no, that isn't COVID, it is seasonal allergies. Or uh providing a uh, a negative COVID test. So they, they got a couple of different methods there, um.
Okay.
Being safe.
Well, sure, and it'd be great to connect the two, cause I think they, they do um go very well together, so just something to think about. Okay, um, let me, let me. And Dr. Lewis, you, you talked about obviously the re- return rate on um surveys, ninety percent at fifty-fifty right now. Um, can you talk a little bit and this probably cross over into some of the public questions that were raised? But can you talk a little bit about, um, if you have an imbalance of, maybe you're at fifty-fifty, but um. Uh, you have an imbalance in the number of available staff that can provide in-person learning?
And that's what we kind of have to figure out as far as what, cause each grade level is different. So, you know, K through five or pre-K through five, there are classroom teachers. So, you know, if there is a little bit of an off balance, what does that look like for in, you know, for homeroom teachers? Right? Because they're with their students all day. And so how do we or can we sub out? What does that look like? Um, or is there another kind of model that we need to look at? It's a little bit more complicated in the middle school, as you saw from, you know, Mr. Cunningham's schedule. Um, we're gonna follow pretty much the same as it is right now, as, as a typical school day. So we'll have to determine based on, you know, what accommodations we can provide for those teachers. If we can't, you know, what kind of certifications do other teachers have to provide instruction um in the same or similar subjects? So I can't answer that right now, who's available. We're gonna have to put those puzzle pieces together once we collect all the data from families.
Okay, that'd be great. And my last question is, uh, staying with the, with the schedule for Diamond Lake, so it's for Dr. Friedrichs. Um, can you elaborate on the uh lunch, the recess lunch, um, uh entry that you have there? Um, so how much time is allocated for recess and how much time for lunch? Besides a glance, if you look at that, you may say, oh, that's two hours uh of, of total time, but I know it's, it's not that. Can you, can you comment on uh what the breakdown is?
Absolutely. The students get twenty-five minutes for recess and then about twenty minutes for lunch. And we realize that we're gonna need to add additional time for hand sanitizing. Um, it, it is split so that they um have two lunch periods. So right now it looks like we're going to have kindergarten going um by themselves because we have a large number of kindergarten students expect to come back. And then we would have firsts and second grade going at the second. Um, we have time built into the schedule for cleaning and sanitizing the rooms in between the lunch periods.
Okay, all right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Uh, I, I had just a couple of quick questions. Um, first, uh, you, this looks like a great plan, really appreciate you working with the, with, with the teachers and the staff. And to accommodate them best as possible, uh, to particularly accommodate those with. Vis a vis their, their ADA uh accommodation submissions. And just ask that you just keep us in the loop on, on how that, how that is going, because I know that's still a work in progress. The, the second is, uh, how are we looking if we go back and as we go back in person? How are we looking in terms of substitute features for in-person learning?
Can I defer to Dr. Jirak on that question?
Yeah, please do. We have um partnered with a company at the beginning of this year, Parallel Education, to help support our substitute needs. But with the nature of schooling as it is now, um, I still anticipate that we would be um potentially facing any sort of uh short. We could potentially face a shortage in substitutes. Um, I mean, due to the nature of them, substitutes wanting to work uh in the current environment or just simply availability at this time. So I have a meeting with Parallel in the next few days to determine what they have available for us and what type of substitute options. Um, they might be able to. they might be able to provide for us. And some of our thoughts have been on employing some substitutes in case of, you know, any specific health-related needs that we might have in the future. So it's definitely something that's on our radar and something we want to be proactive about. But right now, we're still in the process of determining approximately how many substitutes we could count on from Parallel.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of quick questions. I was wondering if we have done anything to try to partner with the Health Department to try to coordinate, like getting the vaccinations done at our school for our staff?
So we're currently working with, and Mr. Rogers, feel free to add, if I miss a detail, we're currently working with Lake County schools, and they've designated two pods, which is Round Lake High School and Stevenson High School. And once we are actually in full implementation of 1B, which is all educators, staff will get to decide which pod they want to go to, based on location. And then they'll just sign up according to a time that's convenient for them. So they're no longer doing specific sites because just they need the manpower, the operation. They need about forty people on-site, and no one school is able to do that. So we're consolidating all of our resources, and we thought that just location-wise, you know, it was just kind of mutually agreed upon that Round Lake and Stevenson would be, you know, the best sites. They have the most resources. And then we're actually, like I said, partnering together. So some of our nurses might go over there if they're needed to help out with that. So as soon as that information's available, staff can sign up on their own as to which location is most convenient for them at the most convenient time, too.
Okay, that's great. I was also wondering, with pre-K, are we considering enrolling any more students this year? Like whether in-person or virtual?
Um, right now, we are doing just individualized preschool screenings for families who have concerns. We do have a limited capacity with our students. And we need to make sure that we, when we bring our students into the building, that we're able to meet all of their needs. So right now, we're going very slowly with adding numbers of students to that program.
Okay. And then what about for special education students who are receiving services virtually? Are they going to be brought into the schools starting around February eighth? Or is it kind of like a later timeline for that?
Is that for Diamond Lake School, or is that for?
It's general.
Do you want to answer that, Mr. Dull?
Yeah, so just like with the rest of our students, we're working on, with those families, on identifying who is looking for in-person learning and who is planning to stay remote. And then our special education staff is going to work on the remote learning plans that we've been operating through all year to kind of update as, as needed to reflect what's the current situation is for that student and the way the services will look. I do know that we had some special education students who are participating in facilitated distance learning academy. So there will be a group that will kind of come back a little sooner with that, with that pod. But the rest, the timeline looks similar to the rest of our students at this point.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I'll start with Mr. Rogers. You had mentioned that lunch will be brought to students in prepackaged containers. Is breakfast going to look similar to that for kids who opt to have breakfast at school?
Yeah, breakfast will be very similar. There'll be a lot of prepackaged, you know, whether it's pastries, or even like egg-o, you know, waffles, or granola bars, Nutri-Grand bars, things like that, that'll all be prepackaged.
Okay. And then can you talk a little bit about the decision to have the kids eat in the cafeteria versus other places, like confined-in classrooms?
Yeah, absolutely. I will just point out, too, our menu will be online, just like it always has been. So, you know, everyone can, you know, could show that everyone's going to be able to eat still nutritious and healthy meals, just like they did last year when we first implemented Quest to our district. You know, but really, the decision to eat in a cafeteria was kind of collaborative process with the principals. It's mostly just because it's easier. It's easier to clean, it's easier to supervise, it's easier to disinfect and sanitize. With the way our custodial schedule is going to be arranged, you'd have to have a time for the students to get out of the classroom, so we can go in and clean off the countertops. Or you're relying on students to use, you know, chemicals to clean up their own space. It's mostly to do with how fast you're able to disinfect and sanitize those areas. And still, there are large spaces where you're able to socially distance, you know, appropriately. We've brought in additional tables and things like that, so kids can spread out and, you know, hopefully enjoy time with their friends, rather than being in the classroom that they're potentially going to be in all day.
And I think I've heard in one of the previous presentations that there are going to be assigned seats for the cafeteria. Is that, is that correct at all three buildings?
It will. So the, the middle school will still utilize their normal space, and they'll have some additional tables brought in. But each space will be allocated for a sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade student, and they will have time to clean and disinfect in between that. The only main difference would be for Diamond Lake, based on their spacing, there's no room for additional seating. So thankfully, we have the adjacent small gym where you can bring in tables and have kids, you know, spread out in both of those spaces. And still be able to take off their mask, eat, and then we were able to clean and mop all that up really quick.
Okay. And then just as kind of a general question related to lunch monitors and also possibly at recess, you know, just to make sure that kids are keeping their distance and making sure that, whether they're outside at recess or inside the cafeteria, that, that they're respecting each other's distancing. Are we going to have more staff available to monitor students during those times?
Yeah, I'll have to defer a little bit to the principals and to develop any individual plans. But, you know, our recommendation would be, you know, we have a lunchroom supervisor stipends available. We'd look to expand that, you know, to offer different, you know, additional roles for staff, you know, take on that extra duty. But it's going to require reinforcement training, just to get everyone comfortable, students especially, with appropriate, you know, students have boundary issues normally, getting in everyone's personal space. So it just requires reinforcement, and, you know, hopefully it doesn't get to the point where disciplinary action is needed. But it needs to happen, you know, quickly and fast, so students understand, hey, you have these restrictions in place for your own health and safety, but at the same time, we want to be able to give you time to have mask breaks. Here's how you can continue to have safe mask breaks and, you know, enjoy some recess at the same time. So I hope I answered that. If there's anything, you know, additional, the principals may be able to provide some other input as well.
I'll just, you know, from the intermediate side, it's definitely that environmental training, it's building those relationships and, and having those discussions and constantly reinforcing what our, what our new policies and procedures are. In addition to that, we're looking at the intermediate side of zoning our playground, where, an example of this would be, we have, you know, the five, five classes in every grade level. So we would have five classes going outside. They would stick with their class in a particular zone. Let's say the soccer field is divided up into a couple of zones, the parking lot is divided up into a couple of zones. You could even potentially look at doing the playground equipment as a zone where you rotate through specific days. So if I'm in a classroom, one day I'm in a soccer field zone, and the next day maybe I'm on the, on the blacktop, and the next day I'm on the, on the playground, and it rotates through that. And then we'll be able to clean the playground surfaces. But then within those zones, it depends on what they're doing. If they're on the soccer field and they can space out at a greater distance, they'd be able to take their masks off. If we chose to do something on the playground equipment, they would have to keep their masks on. Even though we'd be trying to keep them, you know, at least six feet apart, just keep the masks on the playground. And these are modeled after things that other districts have been doing and we've been talking to. So that is all still kind of in flux. You know, we're waiting to see what the exact number of students are going to be and what our, what our opportunities are when we know who's going to be in the building.
At the middle school level, actually, I'll let Mr. Peterson answer this, because he's been working hard on our lunchroom and some of our supervision pieces. So, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you there, Mr. Cunningham. Ms. Quan, I think that's a great question. At the middle school, meeting with our PBIS committee, you know, I think we are going to, we are going to approach it similar to what Mr. Preble was saying in regards to setting up relationships. But also, also, this is a, this is, you know, we've all heard of this, this is profound times. And, you know, we are learning just as kids are, and we are approaching it from a teachable moment kind of aspect here. So what the PBIS committee has, has thought about doing is come up with some informational videos, not only for students, but also for staff as well. Because, you know, as a staff, we are enforcing these expectations, but we also have to form a united front. And, you know, and it's, and it's a community effort. It takes a village. And, you know, we have to, you know, practice what we preach. We have to exemplify those expectations, and then also just kind of continue to remind students, you know, it's going to be consistent, but, you know, as long as we are, it's going to keep coming up. But as long as we are consistent and we keep addressing it all the same way and, and teaching our kids that, hey, this is, this is what school looks like now. Those expectations are going to be met by our kids.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? In terms of the bus and making sure that kids are keeping their masks on, on the bus and keeping their distance, you know, you can't expect the bus driver to do all that. They've already been stressed with, you know, disciplinary actions in the past. So how, how will you enforce proper masking and distancing on the buses? And not expect all of that burden to be placed on the bus driver?
Yeah, as far as, you know, appropriate distancing, we'll be utilizing first student, you know, the first student on the bus will be going to the last seat. They'll load up from back to front, and then they'll release front to back, so that no students have to pass each other on the bus. As far as supervision and, you know, disciplinary, the principals know much more than me on this. But that is, you know, one of the worst supervision elements of a school, getting your students to school and getting them back, you know, from a disciplinary standpoint. So we'd be utilizing very similar procedures. If a student, you know, got in trouble or had a fight on the bus, it would be write-ups. They would be, you know, subject to any of our district's disciplinary procedures and policies for not wearing a mask. So it's going to be frequent, frequent infractions, I guess, or writing students up if they are. It's not going to be, you know, lenient where, hey, you forgot to wear it for the whole trip, don't worry about it, do it next time. We're going to be requesting the bus drivers to write these students up, so we can correct these behaviors immediately. So, but it is going to be a challenge, and it, you know, it takes a partnership with Lakeside. They've been running bus routes this entire year for various districts or, you know, entities that have done facilitated distance learning, and we haven't had any issues with that. You know, again, smaller number of students, but we still are running, you know, thirty, forty students a day on buses. We haven't had any significant issues.
Mr. Rogers, if I can also just respond. You know, part of our role at the, the primary building is to teach children what the appropriate behavior is. And we did have a few students who struggled a little bit with that, with facilitated distance learning. And our bus drivers were fantastic about helping us to put in positive reinforcement, to give the child a chart with a sticker at the end of the day if they rode the bus appropriately and wore their mask appropriately. And just, we really worked on just helping them understand the expected behaviors and giving them the positive response when they did it correctly to help shape that behavior.
I think the good news about all of this is that, you know, earlier in the, in the year, we had fifty-four students who participated in facilitated distance learning. So a lot of these, you know, students are returning, but our principals, as well as some of our staff members, have had the experience of, you know, here's what mask breaks look like, here's how we're going to behave appropriately, or here's what appropriate social distancing are. So I think it's just practice, 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 and laying out the expectations, as each one of them have said. But we know they can do it. We know that we've been successful with that. It's just doing it on a larger scale.
That's great to hear. Thank you. And I just want to thank all of you for just, I know we are only seeing a fraction of the work that's been done in preparing to return to, back to school. And I know this is just hours and hours of time and energy that's been poured into this. So thank you for all of you for just all of the planning and the details that have been put into place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional questions? From the board? No. Okay, I just wanted to make a comment, and I wanted to echo what Mrs. Quan just said, and to thank the district leadership team and all of the building leadership teams and all of our teachers and our staff for all the time that you've spent on these plans. I think we really appreciate all the questions and the feedback and the comments that our teachers have made during this time. And it's really clear in looking at all these mitigation strategies that are going to be implemented into the district's plan, just how high of a priority safety really is. And then I just also wanted to comment on the fact that the mandate from ISB during the pandemic learning has always been to put education through the lens of equity. And I know that's something our district has worked really hard at doing. And with all the studies that we're seeing coming out on learning that's happening during COVID, we are seeing that students, you know, many of which make up our community, like English language learners, special education students, low-income students, really struggle with remote learning, and that in-person learning is really best for them. So I just wanted to commend you on taking that into account as well in the plan, because I think that, you know, in addition to prioritizing safety, we're definitely prioritizing equity and education for all of our students in our community. So I wanted to thank you for that. And with that, I think we wrap up our presentations, and we can move on to our business agenda this evening. Okay, the first item up for the business agenda is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and/or non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. If any one board member, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A through E as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved?
Second.
Just a second. Okay, Lozada?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Armenta?
He was here.
Mr. Armenta was here. Okay, he's no longer here. Okay. Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item B. This is the press policies. So before we go through and make a motion to approve or take action on this item, I just wanted to make sure that no one had any questions since the last board meeting or anything that they would like to discuss before we go ahead and do that. Does anyone have any questions? No, I see a bunch of heads shaking. Okay. Okay, and just a reminder that we do have to read through all the policies, so this motion is rather lengthy. Whereas policy creation and updates and changes to adaptive policies are provided for District Seventy-Six through the Subscription Policy Reference Educational Subscription Service (CPS) from the Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB. And whereas the Policy Committee reviewed the policies and a first reading of the policies was held at the December fifteenth, twenty-twenty combined meeting, therefore be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education moves to approve the policy changes as presented and reviewed in IASB Press Issue One-O-Six. Policy Two, colon, twenty-dash-E, waiver and modification request resource guide. Policy Three, colon, forty, superintendent. Policy Three, colon, forty-dash-E, checklist for superintendent employment contract negotiation process. Policy Four, ten, fiscal business management. Policy Four, colon, fifty-five, use of credit and procurement cards. Policy Four, colon, sixty, dash, AP, one, purchases. Policy Four, colon, eighty, accounting and audits. Policy Four, colon, ninety, student activity and fiduciary. Policy four colon ninety student activity and fiduciary funds. Policy four colon one twenty dash AP food services competitive foods exemptions. Policy four colon one fifty facility management and building programs. Policy four colon one seventy-five convicted child sex offender screening notifications. Policy four colon one seventy-five dash AP one criminal offender notification law screening. Policy five colon thirty hiring process and criteria. Policy five colon thirty AP dash two investigations. Policy five colon one eighty-five dash AP resource guide for family and medical leave. Policy five colon one ninety teacher qualifications. Policy five colon two seventy employment at will compensation and assignment. Policy six colon fifteen school accountability. Policy six colon twenty school year calendar and day. Policy six colon forty curriculum development. Policy six colon two thirty-five dash E five Children's Online Privacy Protection Act. Policy six colon two eighty grading and promotion. Policy six colon three forty student testing and assessment program. Policy seven colon one hundred health eye and dental examinations, immunizations and exclusion of students. Policy seven colon one forty surgeon seizure. Policy seven colon one forty dash E letter to parents slash guardians regarding the right to privacy in the School Settings Act. Policy seven colon three hundred extracurricular activities. Policy seven colon three twenty-five fundraising activity or student fundraising activities. Policy seven colon three forty dash AP one student, school student records. Policy seven colon three forty dash AP one comma E one notice to parents slash guardians and students of their rights concerning a student's school records. Policy seven colon three forty dash EP two storage and destruction of school student records. Policy seven colon three forty dash AP two comma E one letter containing schedule for destruction of school student records. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Lozada?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yeah.
Kwan? Yes.
Okay, moving on to personnel. Be it resolved the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one termination. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Lozada?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yeah.
Juan? Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item D. Be it resolved the Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the second semester teaching and learning plan and the changes and updates in the current twenty twenty-one school year calendar as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Moved.
Second.
Sullivan?
Yeah.
Candela?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Kwan? Yes. Lozada?
Yes.
Moving to item E. Um. Eric, did you want to go through the award recommendation at all, or do you want me just to go to the motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to recap, you know, what our, what the bids came in at and explicitly what it, what it's for. Lisa attached a little, a couple pictures that Eric Hanson put together at the very, very bottom of the agenda. It's the last attachment. You know, if you'd like to view that at all, but this is our recommendation for classroom renovations this summer. So what that would include is the painting, lighting, flooring. The, just the painting, lighting, flooring numbers for all district classrooms. There's only a couple small areas that it doesn't touch. So the three areas it wouldn't touch flooring-wise would be the West Oak Middle School Band and Chorus Room and the Art Room. Just that wing has got some other costs associated with it that we're not gonna be recommending replacing the flooring at that point, but the painting, the, the lighting has been replaced in all those areas and there's gonna be some furniture in there as well. So the one point four million dollar number, it would include construction costs. We'd be working with Pepper Environmental, our Pepper Construction again. And White was the architect that designed our classroom renovation recommendation. So the bids came in really favorably and that's just due to getting out before winter break. So we were estimating this number to be about four hundred thousand dollars higher just based on timeframe and, you know, whether we were able to get out or not. So bids came in really great. We're working with most of the same contractors that did previous summer renovation. So that would be, you know, Ernie Peterson Consolidated Flooring, Ostrander Construction. So we're really comfortable with our partners and Pepper's done a great job managing the projects to this scope in the, in the past. So if you, you're interested in, I can show you on the last attachment. It just says a couple before and after pictures. And again, it's a little hard to see without you physically being in the room. But the rooms in the first attachment just show kind of a before picture in West Oak Middle School in Diamond Lake. Actually, I'm sorry, that's just Diamond Lake before picture. So, you know, it's the basic linoleum tile that we've had the last, you know, fifty to a hundred years in that building and it's, it's very industrial. It works. But it's not very light. It's not bright. It doesn't provide, you know, kind of the modern feel that we've been, been really working towards the last couple of years. So the second picture shows what, one of our classrooms looks like now. So it's got, you know, some light and bright painting on there, LED lighting. It's got a new ViewSax smartboard for all the students that'll replace the older projectors that, you know, weren't really a true touch device. The furniture is very modular, you know, right now the picture's set up to, you know, provide some social distancing. But the key parts of the furniture we're gonna be recommending, you're able to put it together, you know, hopefully we'll be back there soon. We have four or five kids working collaboratively. Very light furniture. They can move around for some small reading pods and things like that. So the back of the classroom's got library, classroom libraries, it's got soft seating. It's very, very nice furniture. But the room's not decorated quite as much because we haven't had a teacher in, you know, really live in there yet. And then the next picture.
I don't think, not to interrupt you, but I don't think the board has the pictures.
Oh, um.
I'm not, I'm not seeing them.
I don't see them either.
It would be the. Excuse me, they're in item ten B down at the bottom. I misunderstood where Eric wanted them placed.
Okay.
And so if you go, if you go down to ten B, it's facility improvements. There's a four-picture slide presentation there. So you can see the improvements.
Yeah, I apologize for that. And again, if you guys are, I, I just, I wanted to walk you through at least a little bit to see what, what we're proposing here. But it's pretty, i- it's part of our five-year renovation project. We, we issued debt certificates a couple of years ago. We spent half of that on getting a new roof for West Oak. So we have brand-new roofs at West Oak and Diamond Lake. And then this classroom, we were really able to do this as efficiently as possible where, you know, we pulled off certain parts of this project, the district could do internaling, like the lighting, we've already accomplished that and took advantage of some really aggressive rebates. So, you know, our proposal, for instance, was for just about a half a million dollars to replace all the lighting. We were able to do it with some other company and get private rebates. And we were able to do it for less than fifty thousand dollars. So it was some significant savings we were able to do on some of these parts of the project. But others, you know, with asbestos abatement and things like that, that's why we were electing to go with Pepper. So Diamond Lake before and after school pic, before and after picture, then there's a West Oak before and after picture. And, you know, it's a lot of big, heavy desks and big clunky, you know, projectors and boards and old furniture. So the, the last slide on there, again, socially-distanced furniture, but we're able to get a lot more modern furniture, modern devices, modern lighting that not only help out the look and feel of the room, you really have to step into it to feel how light and bright it is. But we're a lot more efficient, energy-efficient wise. So that is the proposal for today, to approve those, so five bid packages. Then there's another item on there that are, it's very similar. It's to prove work with Pepper Environmental. That is the asbestos abatement company that we need to do at Diamond Lake. So then our district will officially be, you know, asbestos-free at that point. So I think I have a motion, or there's a resolution there. You basically just approve all those contracts with Pepper.
Yeah.
Eric, on the classroom renovations, how many classrooms are part of that renovation, renovation project?
Uh, we have eighty classrooms. So that's seventy-seven of them that'll be renovated. So there's just three of them that won't see flooring. Other than that, every other one is, everyone is getting renovated. And more importantly for us, every one of them is gonna be getting furniture and that's gonna fit in our two-point-five-million-dollar budget.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Great. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, then we will go ahead with these two motions. Be it resolved the Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the summer twenty twenty-one construction projects with Pepper Construction for a contract amount of one million four hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars, which includes the lowest qualified bid for each bid package as outlined in the attached memo, unassigned allowances and Pepper's construction management, general conditions, general liability insurance and fee. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Lozada?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Kwan? Yes. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Okay, and now we will move on to the asbestos action item as well. Be it resolved the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the agreement with Pepper Environmental Technologies Pet for a contract amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand and seventy-three dollars, which includes the lowest qualified bidder and pet's program management. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Candela?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yeah.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Kwan? Yes. Lozada?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our business agenda for this evening. Do we have any board discussion?
No items at this time.
Okay. And then we have three freedom of information requests. It looks like they were all answered. And notices and communications. We have, as usual, the Board of Education meeting calendar, right, which stays the same. And then the E-rate program notification. Are there any, anyone have any comments on the E-rate? No. I'm just staring at some blank faces.
Nope.
Okay, then we will move on to public comments and petition on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items this evening? If so, please just type those into the chat box and we will read them into the meeting, just like we did earlier. And I will give everyone a minute to do that. Okay, I'm not seeing any comments on non-agenda items. So we will move on to others.
And we just have one item under others. Actually, there's three items under it, but it's all under the same topic of community donations and holiday. And as I'm sure you all saw through the different district communications that were going out, we had three instrumental people in our community, Mr. and Mrs. Longstrath, who have been longtime donators since I've been here of a very generous amount. And, you know, as you can see, they donated for district again. Anything related is, as they shared with us to support our relief efforts of getting students back into school or anything related to additional COVID resources. And then I just, I want to make sure I say her name correctly. One of our parents. I don't see her last name on here. I apologize. But Daisy was able to coordinate with, with Priya many donations as far as gift cards to grocery stores and that were provided to our families in needs. And then Mr. Dahl made a generous donation again that identified for individual family, families who we worked with principals on in giving them personal donations over the holidays. So I want to thank Daisy for working with Priya as well as with Mr. Dahl. And then also, again, Miss the Longstrath, Mr. and Mrs. Longstrath, who have continued to support our district. Their son went here, I believe. He's almost forty now, but they've been longtime supporters and contributors and also helped with the referendum several years back. And then lastly, I just want to take a minute to recognize and compliment Daisy. Thank you so much for your outstanding job today translating the document not only in writing, but also in presenting. And I know that was something that was put upon you late in the game. So thank you because, especially because you, you know, we live this and breathe this as principals and district leadership team members. So we're able to speak to it and we have that experience. But for you to come in and do such a great job, even though I couldn't understand about a tenth of what you were saying, you did great. So thank you so much, Daisy, for all your work, not only translating the written document, but your presentation tonight. And I think we broke a record. I think it was about an hour and forty-five minutes. So great job, everybody.
I just had one quick other.
Sure.
Jump in. I didn't know if anybody saw in today's Daily Herald, page three, about how District Seventy-Five and One Twenty are handing out the thermometers for, 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 for households that may not have them as they start in-person learning. I just thought that was a cool thing. It's, it's an article by, by Mick. And anyway, I just encourage you to take a look. It's, you know, it's actually a small, it's a small thing, but it's actually, I think, a really interesting idea.
Thanks, Mr. Hauptman. I know Mrs. Hale had brought that to my attention too. And we talked about it, we talked about it at DLT. It is, it's a, it's a great idea. So when we identify exactly which students and families are coming back to in-person learning, we're gonna reach out to them to see if any of them need, you know, additional resources such as a thermometer to help with, you know, that screening process.
That's great. I see a public comment did come in. So I'm gonna just take a minute to read that before we conclude the meeting. While the entire district has been remote, there's been unity. The moment you start running two programs, division will begin. I caution the district to not ignore this reality and to give careful consideration as to how they will bridge this divide. In addition, I encourage the district to give thought on how to provide connections between the in-person and distance learning students before both options becomes a reality. Thank you for that. Okay, do we have any other others? No. Okay, well, on that, we will wish Mr. Hanson very happy birthday. We will not subject you to our singing. Why not? But we will try to let you go so you can celebrate with your family. May I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Lozada?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Kwan? Yes. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Okay, that concludes the meeting. Thank you all so much. Happy New Year. It's nice to see you again. It's been a while. So welcome back.
Happy birthday, Eric.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Take care.
Bye.
Bye, guys.
Bye, guys.